Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education’s meeting of October 24th. I want to welcome everyone and greet my colleagues. Dr. Golson, good evening to you. We do not have our student presenter this evening, so we’ll proceed to our board prayer and pledge of allegiance, and I’ll ask my colleague, Ms. Boozer Struther, to please lead us in those.
Oh God, we pray to minister that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Tate, would you please call the row?
Sure. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Omalola?
Here.
Ms. Queen?
(noise).
Ms. Shepherd?
(noise).
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Present.
Mr. Wallace?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Dr. Thornton?
Here. Thank you very much, and I want to thank Ms. King and the board staff for preparing us for this meeting. Thank you, Ms. Queen. Ms. Queen, Ms. King, we have queens and kings, you know.
(inaudible).
(laugh) All right. I have brief comments from the chair. We’ve lost a former member of the Board of Education, a long-serving member, Ms. Beverly Biander. She represented District One for many years on this board, and also, we have the loss of a classroom teacher, Mr. Cash Williams from the Charles Herbert Flowers High School. So if you would, join me in a—Ms.—Mr.
—Ms. —
—Miss —
—Okay, it’s Ms. —Okay, it says Mr. —Ms. —Cash A. Williams. If you’d join me in a moment of silence, please, for them. Thank you very much. And, Dr. Golson, I want to thank you and the Excellence in Education Foundation for an excellent gala that was put on on behalf of our school system. I want to thank all of the staff members, Ms. Wilson and Mr. Rhodes and the staff for doing that, the board members who were present. We all enjoyed it, and we highlighted our school system and our great luminary exemplars, the great graduates of our school system. It was a good time, and we also raised some money for us, for our kids. And to the audience out there, if you did not contribute, there’s still time for you to contribute, especially our corporate partners, to be philanthropic, good citizens on behalf of public education, so we’d encourage you to do that. We do have upcoming meetings that I’d like to announce. Our next board meeting is on November 7th, and I want to highlight again the functioning of our three major committees. The next meeting of the Academic Achievement Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Montero, will be on November 14th. Our Budget and Operations and Finance Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Wallace, will be on November 18th, and then we’ll have another board meeting on November the 21st. All of our meetings, as you know, are held to the public here at Sasa Building, so we’d encourage you, those who are interested in interacting with the board, to please sign up, to come to speak to us. And finally, I want to thank all the citizens who are participating in the town halls, the Kerwin Town Halls throughout our county. We’re having very successful Blueprint for Maryland’s Future Town Hall meetings. We had one last night, in fact, in Ms. Ahmed’s district, which was quite successful. So please, I’d encourage all who want to support adequate and equitable funding for our children to please go to—I think there’s one more that’s going to be held at the Oxon Hill High School. So please—And then there is, led by our student board member, he’s getting off to an aggressive start, there will be one at Parkdale, which is really focused on our student leadership, led by Mr. Omalola. So I want to thank you, sir, for your leadership in that space. Colleagues, I will now ask for the approval of the agenda from October 24th. The motion is in order.
I move to—
It’s properly moved and seconded that the minutes from our meeting of October 24th be approved. Any modifications? Hearing no modifications. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. I’ll now ask for your approval of the minutes from our work session of October 10th. Motion is in order.
(inaudible).
There, seconded. It’s properly moved and seconded that the work session minutes of October 10th be approved, hearing no discussion. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. And we’ll now move to our news break. A peace cross heard.
After a long legal battle, the U.S. Supreme Court recently ruled that the peace cross here in Bladensburg, that has stood here for 100 years and honors the sacrifice of World War I soldiers, can stay here, right where it is. And you know, interestingly, on the same day that the U.S. was celebrating the signing of the Constitution, the law class at Potomac High School actually revisited that decision and second-guessed it with a Supreme bench of their own. Dressed in regulation black robes, the Potomac juniors and seniors had not just the look, but the confidence to decide a case that pitted petitioners and defenders of the First Amendment’s separation of church and state. Specifically, would they find the 100-year-old Bladensburg Peace Cross an unconstitutional endorsement of religion or not? Their arguments, as you might expect, were heated and impassioned.
Good afternoon. It was built to honor those young men who risked their lives for our country, to save our lives and to honor us and to make sure that we could live in peace. This cross was funded by mothers who lost their sons and needed a way to mourn their sons. The purpose wasn’t based on religion. It was based on honoring these soldiers.
Think about it. A 40-foot cross, it’s only known to be promoting—to be promotion—a promotion of Christianity, being shoved down your throat at an intersection you have no choice but to drive by every day, whether it’s on the errand or on your route to work. That’s promotion, just as an ad is on your phone during a YouTube video. The thing that I find disturbing about this is that it’s funded by the local government, money which funds the parks and recreations, with money taxed from property taxpayers.
For teacher Nisa Kotman, an attorney herself, the many moot courtship arranged, celebrated America’s Constitution, a document both unique and indispensable.
Part one was purpose. They had to talk about the purpose of it. Part two was effect. What effect does this cross have? And three was entanglement. Is there real entanglement between this religious image and what it stands for and the government?
Listening to the student lawyers and judges, you could hear how seriously they took their roles, their responsibilities, and, yes, their citizenship.
How much research did you do on the peace cross and the court ruling, because you seem to be very well informed?
Yes. Actually, I did a lot of research. Like, last night, you know, while I was on my homework, I got on YouTube. I was looking up on the Internet. I was like, you know what? I had to be my—to be the best, because I’m like the last person speaking, so I was like, I have to give it my all, so go home or—go big or go home. That’s how I go.
Because the Constitution is the guiding law of the land. It helps us be able to be free and have the freedoms, and those different freedoms, especially in the First Amendment, like—in the First Amendment, like, freedom of speech or religion, it’s really important to be able to have those freedoms and be a person and be able to live freely.
Honestly, when I first read the case, I had already came to a conclusion myself, and when I first read it, I was against the Supreme Court. I actually heard about the original hearing. Ruth Bader Ginsburg wrote the dissent, and she was for it to be removed, and I agreed with her.
After both sides rested their cases, the judges recessed for deliberation. How that rule was anybody’s guess.
Do you think you’re going to win today?
I do. I’m going to win. It’s okay. I’m going to win.
I want to think that they’re going to follow the logic of the Supreme Court. However, we got some feisty folks in there. We have our own notorious RBG. I think you can figure out who that was.
It is the decision of the court in a 6-3 ruling in keeping the peace cross, because —we find that it is a memorial just like the George Washington Memorial, also because it’s been there for 100 years and it doesn’t affect your religion. If you are—it doesn’t affect your religion if you are truly faithful to your religion. Court adjourned.
Just as the Potomac High School ruling was almost identical to the Supreme Court’s, 6 to 3 versus 7 to 2, so too was the poise of the young barristers, who may one day sit on the federal bench themselves.
Hopefully, I’m nurturing young legal scholars who will be judges, who will be lawyers, who will help us solve the problems in this country. I’m beyond impressed with them. They made me extremely proud today.
And would you like to be a lawyer yourself?
Yes, I would. At first, I thought I wanted to do different things with my career, but then when I joined the Law Academy, I seen—I got—I was able to experience more things and experience the law and see a different side of not just people getting arrested, or I can help those who got arrested and might not know how to represent themselves.
Would you not consider entanglement, then? Because technically, this cross is still being paid by taxpayers.
Would you like to be a judge for real someday?
I don’t think I’d be able to be a good judge, because I would prefer to argue the side, you know, and find the pros and cons than actually, like, find, like, the correct answer.
So it was a great day for the Constitution and an even greater day for the future lawyers at Potomac High. This is Dave Zarin reporting.
Colleagues, we’ll now turn to Dr. Golson for her report.
Thank you. Good evening. As we continue to focus on family and community engagement, I encourage you to join us for the last of my three listening sessions. The sessions began last week at Oxon Hill High School, followed by a session this week at Laurel High School, and we will wrap up at Fairmount Heights High School on Tuesday, November 5th at 6:30 PM. During the sessions, I discuss the common issues shared last year and what we’ve done to address those concerns. I discuss transportation challenges and hear from members of the Prince George’s County Public School community as they share their own ideas, concerns, and solutions. Last Friday, the Excellence in Education Foundation for Prince George’s County Public Schools hosted the inaugural Hall of Fame Gala at MGM National Harbor. PGCPs alumni and one retired educator were honored for their distinguished contributions to our community. I’d like to thank all of our sponsors and attendees who supported the event and raised more than $165,000 for scholarships and student programming. October is the National Principals Month, and each year, the American Federation of School Administrators, the National Association of Elementary School Principals, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals partner to celebrate principals for their tireless dedication to students, staff, and families. For 2019, the organizations are advocating on behalf of principals with the theme “Great Schools Have Great Principals.” I encourage you to let your child’s principal know how much you appreciate all they do throughout the year. Speaking of great principals, I’d like to congratulate Principal Cecilia Jones-Balding, staff, and students of Glen Arden Woods Elementary School for being named a 2019 National Blue Ribbon School. The United States Department of Education will present Glen Arden Woods with a flag and an engraved plaque during an awards event on November 15th at the Gaylord National Resort and Conference Center at the National Harbor. On October 16th and 17th, we hosted the specialty program showcases for students and families to learn all about our amazing instructional programs, including language immersion, creative and performing arts, Montessori, talented and gifted, dual enrollment, career and technical education, just to name a few. As a reminder, applications for specialty programs are due November 15th, so please make sure you get yours in in time. As many of you know, students in our carpentry, electrical, and HVAC programs alongside their teachers and business partners create a student-built house. I’m proud to say our most recent house, number 43, just sold for $470,000. The sale of the home will yield a profit of more than $100,000, which will be used to support future projects. Lastly, this week transportation—this week is Transportation Safety Week. The week is designed to ensure the public is aware of the critical role they and bus drivers play every day in the safety of—in transporting our students. We received a proclamation from Governor Larry Hogan to commemorate this important designation. While most of the recent discussion around transportation has been centered around bus arrival times, the reality—is that every day, our bus drivers transport over 80,000 students safely to and from school. Driving a school bus is not an easy job, so I want to thank all of our drivers for getting our students safely to and from school. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Now, colleagues, we’ll turn to the public comments section. We have 14 speakers that have signed up to speak. I’d ask them to please adhere to the guidelines that were presented to them as they were signing up. I’d like to ask our first speaker to please come forward, Ms. Patricia Eubanks, speaking as an individual
Hello, I’m Patricia Eubanks, former school board member of Prince George’s County Public Schools. This is my story and my reality. Who likes being accused, and especially when what was done wasn’t malicious intent, only trying to complete the good work that you started? But I learned many times that God will allow something to happen to you just to reveal the hearts of other people. Today, I make no justification for my actions, but I do apologize. As a woman who has dedicated the majority of my life to family and social justice issues, I had fallen smack dab in the middle of a few of them. Caring for my mom the final years of her life with dementia, with two children in college and no financial support from their father, losing my job because of a rift with the government. I can’t prove it, but experience—but experiencing ageism now, once I tried to return to work after my mom passed. Last but not least, that created the problem, which is why I stand before you today as an ex-board member. I became a part of the 7.4% nationally of families who become homeless, but I continue to serve. Ironically, when it happened to me, I knew that one day I would have to share my story for the greater good. This is much bigger than me. Since 1975, every board meeting has opened with a prayer, which is Policy 8344.3. The same God is the one who told me to run for public office without any political backing or any finances. He told me during my personal prayer time the exact percentage of votes I would receive to win my second and third term. He does see and know everything and the intents of everyone’s heart. So, Mr. Burrows, you know that nothing you did goes without God’s seeing, and it doesn’t escape Him. One night, you were negatively in my dream. The next morning, I received a call. I’m not angry with you at all. I feel sad for the direction you are headed. The last few words of the board prayer are, “Stir us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding.” Your underhanded actions and tactics to a fellow board member—
Ms. Eubanks, you may not address personal comments to board members, so please make your statement without doing so.
Sure. Underhanded actions were anything but kind. Your attempt, for whatever reasons, have been noticed.
That’s okay.
Um—
That’s okay.
Walking around with such sustain—
Ms. Eubanks—
Yes.
Did you—you may not direct your comments.
I’m not direct. I took out that word.
Your time has expired. One more comment, and then we’ll have to end.
Sure. Uh—
First—
Citizens want to know—
Point of order.
—Citizens want to know of this county, if you can support them, but you can’t support people who serve with you.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks.
No problem.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you. The next speaker is Roland Roy from the Department of Transportation, bus driver shortage. Mr. Roy, you here? Please come forward. And—
Good evening, Board. Roland Roy, 12-year bus driver, guy at a bus lot, here to speak on the bus driver shortage. The bus driver shortage is not a nationwide shortage, but a PGCPs shortage. The Bible says in Galatians 6:7, “Be not deceived; God is not mocked, for whatever man sows, that shall he also reap.” By being at ground zero, we are seeing the deep impact of this shortage and how it is affecting our kids and the hard-working, taxpaying parents. Over the years, we have stood before this board and have given our input on what changes that could possibly be made to help retain drivers, but it is evident now with this shortage that it fell on deaf ears. On the news, there was a statement made that it’s tough to recruit bus drivers. Well, what do I have to say to that? It’s tough driving the bus with 40 more—40 or more kids, screaming kids. It’s tough having a student punch you in the face. It’s tough doing five schools in the morning at 6:00 in the PM. It’s tough doubling and tripling runs, and yes, sir, it’s tough getting cussed out by a parent when you arrive to the bus late for helping cover a run. It’s tough when you have to clean up vomit, urine, and even the number two. We do it because we love transporting our precious cargo. I brought my daughter’s degree that she received this year, that my wife and I put her through school, from Bowie State this year, Bachelor of Science, degree in government pre-law. This does not qualify her to drive a school bus. She would need to obtain a commercial driver’s license, a CDL license, to drive a school bus. So my point, those in charge of running transportation, your degree does not qualify you to drive a school bus. But—but—but, a commercial driver’s license will qualify you to drive a school bus. Commercial—and—and I think that you should obtain one and help us get our precious cargo to school during this bus driver shortage. And as a parent told me to let you all know, parents say, tell them tonight when you get there, change to “Here Comes the Bus App” to “Wherein the H is the bus.” Put your money, put—put work where it needs to be put. It’s tough, yeah, but we need to tell the truth. How did we get in this situation when we go before the news? Let’s let them know, how did we get here with the shortage? If you don’t take care of what you have here now, you’re going to lose what you got. Respect. These kids got to suffer because of the actions of grown folk. If you love kids, show action and prove it. Talk means nothing. Kids waiting at the bus stop hour, two hours to get picked up. It’s crazy.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
No more excuses. Thank you, boy.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, for your comments and your service. The next speaker is Yotundo Igadola, speaking regarding boundary proposal.
Good evening, Madam CEO, distinguished colleagues, and board members.
Good evening.
Thank you for the platform and opportunity to speak regarding the proposed boundary changes. As you know, many people bought their homes within the various neighborhoods currently zoned for Whitehall, simply to pursue the highest quality of public education for their children. I have three children. I have a second grader, a four-year-old, and a two-and-a-half-year-old. My eldest child has attended Yorktown and Northview, so I’ve gotten a glimpse of what these schools offer, and the quality is definitely different from Whitehall. When we learned of the proposal, it was like the DJ pulling the record off your favorite song. Bowie is a wonderful place to live. It’s growing. It’s expanding, but you’ve got to understand that, given the initial timeline, we couldn’t help but wonder, why was this process moving so quickly with the procedure? It’s important to definitely do a proper evaluation and an analysis and assessment to address what the root cause of this problem is. With the initial community forms last week and an early December notification of approved changes, I, like many parents, are very grateful that there’ll be a shared housing review and residency certification specific to Whitehall. I appeal to you all to initiate an anonymous tip line to create the ability to anonymously report families who might reside out of the school boundary, because, quite frankly, that’s part of why we’re in this predicament. Why can’t we tap into the expertise of our neighbors within DC? What are they doing to enforce and persecute the individuals who are dishonest about their resident status? How are we going to deal with the—the students who are identified as tag? If we move forward with this proposal, we’ve got to be able to say, are they going to be able to come back to Whitehall? Will they be able to retain their position? Are we going to grant special—special transfer requests? Ultimately, the board should consider terminating the transfer requests for out-of-boundary students. There are a lot of unanswered questions with this proposal, and at the same time, there’s low-hanging fruit that can quickly be addressed. Overall, we’re a concerned community at Whitehall, and our main concern is making sure that the situation is not where we’re slapping a Band-Aid and moving too quickly to address these issues. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Courtney Miller regarding the boundary proposal. Ms. Miller?
Good evening. I didn’t realize I’d be speaking until I saw my name, and I have—my voice is gone, so forgive the hoarseness. I would first like to say I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I also appreciate your responsiveness. I know I’ve emailed all of you a number of times and flooded your inboxes, and I do appreciate the responses from all of you who’ve responded. I would like to thank Dr. Golson and Board Member Ahmed and the entire PG County Board for hearing our voices and speaking up for our children. I have two children, a four-year-old and a five-year-old, and like the other parents shared, we had a five-year plan in place. I began visiting Whitehall when my oldest was two, stalking the school, meeting the principal, going on tours, renovating our home with my husband, and we recently moved into our Whitehall-zoned school this May. So you can imagine, when we got the news about the proposed boundary change, we were devastated. But we do really appreciate you being a voice for those that you represent. We recognize that there are issues at Whitehall with the overcrowding, but we do appreciate the opportunity to engage stakeholders such as parents, teachers, and community members in finding solutions to the problems that plague our community. I do recognize that there is a—it’s not proportionate with the rate at which Bowie is growing and at the rate at which the enrollment that—at Whitehall is growing, so I do encourage you to really, really aggressively dig into this residency verification as the numbers don’t add up. I thank you for your time. I’m really just excited about having the opportunity to sit down with elected officials and other stakeholders to find a solution. So we thank you for slowing down this process and really doing your due diligence and doing right by our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Miller. The next speaker is Angela Rod. Would you please come forward if you’re here? I don’t see Ms. Rod. The next speaker is Lucinda Orange regarding bus drivers. Ms. Orange, are you here? I don’t see Ms. Orange, so Rashawn Biddle, education policy. Ms. Biddle, please come forward. It’s Mr. Biddle, is that right?
Yeah, that’s Mr. Biddle.
I’m sorry, sir.
That’s all right.
Uh-huh.
Members of the board, Dr. Golson, thank you for your time. My name is Rashawn Biddle. My son is a kindergartner at Whitehall Elementary. And thanks to Dr. Golson’s decision to withdraw this proposal and the advocacy of District Five member Ahmed, my son will continue to be part of the Whitehall community and the Whitehall family for at least another couple of years. I thank you, Dr. Golson, for withdrawing the proposal, and I thank you for engaging in a process that looks at these issues holistically, comprehensively, and in a well-informed manner. Thank you, Ms. Ahmed, for your strong advocacy on behalf of our community and on behalf of the district, and opposing the proposed boundary changes as well as creating a task force that will engage the entirety of the stakeholders in the Whitehall community. This is a process that the board is quite familiar with, and Ms. Williams has led in—in her district as well. We— We, the family, the families and stakeholders of Whitehall Elementary, look forward to partnering with the board and with staff on developing and implementing these solutions. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Teresa Dudley, who's President of the Prince George's County Educators' Association regarding the budget. That person is not here.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President.
This week and last evening, we had the pleasure of having our prestigious gentleman, Dr. Alvin Thornton, attend one of our community forums on the Thornton, well, the Kerwin Commission funding, but we talked about Thornton, too, because you can't talk with, about one without the other. And I wanted to come before you today to encourage all of the listening body that we are having another one on November the 18th at Oxon Hill High School, and it is my understanding that, I have it, Dr. Kerwin will also be in attendance along with Dr. Thornton. So as we continue the dialogue about the input and what is really going to happen with the Kerwin Commission, I think we really need to be on our Ps and Qs about making sure that we are all on our Ps and Qs with respect to this. In light of that, I wanted to have a conversation about the budget tonight. And for the past several months, we have been told, PGCEA has, that the community schools' coordinator positions were going to be contracted out because, and a contract was going to be held through DSS. Our concern is, is that those contracted-out positions should become permanent positions within PGCPS, because the concern was that where would the money come from in the long term to get them, so, to keep them. So as we move forward on our Kerwin Commission implementation, the recommendations of the commissions, the Formula Committee, was to make sure that the money is solid for our high concentrations of poverty over the next 10 years. So as we are looking forward, I hope that we continue in that light and working together, and if the opportunity at the end of session is that this does indeed happen, that we make sure that those positions become permanent positions within PGCPS. I would also like to add that, as we look at the budget recommendations that are coming from the different departments, that the restorative practices piece and training continue on. There were several courses that were canceled this summer that were not, that just did not happen, and we're concerned about that. And we want to also make sure that you are all also invited on November the 2nd. November is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We are having a cancer awareness event at PGCEA, and I thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Madam President. The next speaker is Charlene Faulkner regarding school boundaries.
Good evening. My name is Charlene Faulkner, parent of Whitehall students, a first grader and a fourth grader. And first, let me say thank you so much for postponing the decision for re-boundary, the redistrictification of our students. And I would like to also propose that not only do we enforce the, the task force, that we also make some changes with our annual re-verification, instead of just the initial verification that we make this annually, and that we also change the verbiage and required documents. I'd like to ensure that possibly we could mirror what is enforced at DC. They have verbiage such as that you will be charged, or instead of they may be charged, they have requirements on timelines as to when documents are required. They have a three-day stipulation that if you move within three days, you have to notify the school of the changes. I'd also like to inform you that if we could change the required documents to something with the kids identified on there, or something that is less likely to be fraud, like a tax document where it states the dependence of this household. I understand this would be a county-wide change, and there's only one person that's currently verifying, all these individuals, all the schools, and that is, so I recommend possibly having a task force of students, parents. We are, the parents are more than willing to help in whatever way we can. We're also asking that possibly having signs at the schools identifying the stipulations as the punishments that will be in place, phone numbers that we could call, numbers, email addresses we could notify of fraudulent activities for residency, and, you know, just enforcing that those that are currently in the school, that they are supposed to be in the school. I understand that is a small chip at the numbers and the over strength, I'm sorry, the, the overall population in the school, but still, it, it makes a difference. It's a small difference, but still makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Faulkner. The next speaker is Nicole Edmonds regarding the boundary change. Ms. Edmonds.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I proudly lend my voice to the chorus of voices that you're hearing tonight regarding the proposed boundary changes for Whitehall Elementary. I'm a Bowie resident with two children at Whitehall Elementary, and the recently withdrawn boundary proposal would have seen my children move to a consistently underperforming elementary school in the area in 2020. I'd also like to recognize and thank Ms. Ahmed for her advocacy for the District Five families. I'd also like to thank Dr. Goldson. We spoke for a moment on Monday evening for your swift withdrawal of the proposal. It's greatly appreciated. We are excited to follow a thorough and fulsome process to develop and fully vet a plan that is going to address the overcrowding concerns at Whitehall. We do recognize that there are issues, but we want to make sure that we think through what an appropriate solution is to the issue. So I am part of the task force as well. I'm looking forward to working together, and I'm hoping that we can get to a just, fair, and equitable solution, one that will see all of the Whitehall scholars continuing to receive the quality education that they are now receiving at Whitehall, whether that be at Whitehall or a peer institution. And I think that is also part of the issue, is that if there's a boundary change proposal, all of our schools should be of such equality that parents wouldn't worry and you wouldn't see this. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Danielle Browner Palmer regarding rezoning in Bowie.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Browner Palmer, and I'm the parent of a seven-year-old, seventh, second grader at Whitehall Elementary. Last weekend, my neighbor informed me of the intended zoning changes for Whitehall Elementary. Naturally, I was shocked to find out that the school I had painstakingly planned for my son to attend might no longer be his school in the upcoming school year. In November 2018, I began preparing my home for sale with the intent of moving to Bowie in the Whitehall School District. In Prince George's County, Whitehall Elementary School is one of the few top-performing elementary schools. As a public elementary school teacher, I know how important a high-quality education is, especially in early childhood. On August 9th, I sold my home in Hyattsville and closed my home in Bowie three weeks later, four days prior to the first day of school. I want my son to be able to grow up in an area with a diverse school community where he can develop long-lasting, healthy relationships. This is part of why I chose to move to the Whitehall School District. I also want to mention that this is the fourth school my son has attended in three years, not by any fault of his own, but due to the poor quality of education I felt he was receiving. Should we end up being rezoned for a school other than Whitehall? This will be his fifth, the fifth school my son will have attended in as many years. I moved to Bowie thinking that my son would at least have the consistency of completing elementary school in one place. I moved to Bowie anticipating taking the money I was paying for my son to go to private school and putting it toward a higher mortgage payment. I paid a higher price for my home because the school, because of the school district I'm zoned for. I pay a premium in taxes in exchange for a higher-quality school. This is a sacrifice I have willingly made because I want my son to have the best education possible. I know that my story of how and why I moved to Bowie is not one in isolation, but a fairly common one in the Whitehall community. I understand that Whitehall is overcrowded, while other elementary schools in Bowie are under-enrolled, but rezoning Whitehall is merely putting a Band-Aid on the broken bones of the education system in PG County. I think that we should be asking, how can we bring other schools in PG County up to the same high-performing bar as Whitehall? How is Prince, how is Prince George's County going to support the continued growth of Bowie and the public education needs of all families residing here? I believe that all students, no matter their zip code, deserve a high-quality education, which is why I've served the last five out of six years as a public school teacher in low-income communities. While I don't know where the ultimate resolution to the Whitehall overcrowding dilemma lies, I do know that decisions that so significantly affect our community should involve the citizens and the families they affect. I implore Dr. Goldson and the board to actively include the Whitehall community in this grand task of information gathering, fact-finding, and solution-seeking. By doing this, it is ensured that our, our voices are heard and fair, equitable, and sustainable resolutions can be found. Thank you for withdrawing the boundary proposal and allowing me the opportunities to speak, and I respectfully ask that the Whitehall community be actively included in the boundary review, review process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Browner. The next speaker is Janelle Swan regarding the Whitehall zoning matter. And I don't see Ms. Swan, so we'll call on our final speaker, who is Latoya Edwards. Ms. Edwards, are you here? And not seeing Ms. Edwards, that exhausts our speakers' lifts for this evening. I will now turn to Dr. Goldson to introduce the boundary proposal. Dr. Goldson.
Good evening again. Staff will provide an overview of the revised boundary proposal presented to the community October 14th through the 16th. The presentation you will see this evening contains recommendations to move four sixth-grade classes to the middle school level. We currently have 75 elementary schools that serve K- to V students. Moving these four schools will leave us with 39 elementary schools with grade six. The second recommendation is to create a middle school language immersion program, which will be co-located at Kettering Middle School. Lastly, two minor boundary adjustments that will impact less than 20 students will be presented. The recommendation for Whitehall Elementary School to address overcrowding has been removed from the recommendations for consideration and will be revisited in our more comprehensive boundary review to address secondary school enrollment, as outlined in the letter provided to the community. Without further discussion, please welcome Ms. Rihanna McCarter, who will present the
Good evening. On the first slide, we provide a brief outline of the annual process by which we analyze the utilization of our schools, of our school facilities, and review and implement boundary changes where needed. This process aligns with our educational facility master plan and capital resources. Before you, you have the timeline for changes for this, that we're going to review this fall and that would be implemented next fall. We've, of course, already undertaken three community forums in mid-October, and we're here at the second item, the discussion item. Moving forward, we will have a board, a public hearing on the 12th, and communities will receive an invitation to that in, in the coming week, and then ultimately will hold a, a board vote to, so the board can decide what to move forward with. So moving sixth grade to middle school, this is part of, again, the educational facilities master plan, it's one of the strategic goals, is to create a sixth, seventh, eighth-grade structure at all of our middle schools so that it's seamless across the district, as Dr. Goldson mentioned. We've made tremendous progress. Majority of schools are, now have this grade structure. With the new middle schools that'll be constructed throughout the county, we'll be able to fully implement this. But there's a few cases where we can go ahead and realign students now, and so these four elementary schools before you would, would undertake this change after, after this school year. So rising, excuse me, current fifth and sixth graders from these elementary schools would move on to middle school, the neighborhood middle school next year.
So we wanted to do a couple things as relates to the presentation tonight. Wanted to just give a number of board members who are new to this process some understanding of the timeline and, and the way it works for boundaries. We recognize that this is always a tough decision, and it's one that really rests in lies with the Board of Education. At the same time, while it's not always our preference, we're also publicly acknowledging a major budget priority of Dr. Goldson prior to her release December 12th, which is the expansion of the language immersion program to the middle years. As you know, there's been a number of public advocates, parents, and others who have talked about this for a very, very long time, and while there was a task force and there was a recommendation, this is really the first public acknowledgement of the effort moving forward, and one that deserves acknowledgement. But it didn't just come because a group of parents came and advocated every board meeting for that. It was a parent survey, there was a task force, and what you see in front of you are some results. We have a Chinese immersion program, a Spanish immersion program, we have several French immersion program that most of you all know very well. The Chinese immersion parents and others were, all were surveyed, and as you see, the initial recommendation that came from the survey was 83% requested to stay at Paint Branch Elementary, 16.7 requested to move to middle school. And, and that makes sense, because for many of them, that's the only school that they have known. For Spanish immersion, as you can see, the majority of parents wanted to stay in their, they, they all wanted continuity, they all wanted some type of middle-years program. So when it comes to Chinese immersion, and we have Dr. Kyra Libby and Carmen Hinder here as well to answer any program-related questions, but when it comes to the immersion program, ultimately what we will recommend in this boundary proposal is to move the continuity to middle school. And that is for a number of reasons, primarily because we, we know that we need the additional, most of those students actually go to the middle school area. In order to move it to, keep it at Paint Branch Elementary School, it has to be a K-8. And while there's a lot of discussions, this is what we believe is the best recommendation moving forward. Sixth-grade continuity will be provided at Paint Branch Elementary until we build the new William Word and Adelphi Area Middle Schools, which means you'll see in a few years a similar proposal of moving sixth grade to mid, to middle school. But right now, we're proposing to keeping the students at Paint Branch Elementary and not moving them to an older William Word or an older, they'll do Adelphi Area Middle School until it's built. Seventh-grade continuity will begin at, Green Belt Middle School in 2021. And then lastly, providing continuity has no material impact on Green Belt Middle. It should be noted, for those who know the area pretty well, Green Belt Middle is a very, very high-capacity school and one that we're dealing with on a daily basis. CIP, our operations staff, and school leadership are always looking at ways to help that school, because it is a very high-capacity school. The middle-years program continuity for Spanish immersion actually allows us one central location, and we're recommending Kettering Middle. And if you see as the asterisk, it's identified as an immersion task force recommendation. As I mentioned before, Dr. Goldson, actually, when she was Deputy Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, along with several of our staff, we held together a task force looking at recommendations for immersion, and this was one of the recommendations that came out, a central location for our Spanish immersion programs. Sixth graders would be assigned to Kettering Middle for fall 2020, that's next year. Those, so those students currently in fifth grade would go to Kettering Middle School. Kettering Middle does not have sufficient open seats, so we would have to move some current neighborhood boundary schools students out in order to allow for one centralized location, and Ms. Rihanna will talk a little bit more about what that looks like. Kettering enrollment, enrollment at Kettering Middle would approximately be a 60% neighborhood and 40% immersion once fully phased in. We're not necessarily saying that will happen immediately, but over time, it'll be a 60-40 split. In front of you, or on, on the next slides, are several immersion-focused parent meetings. I do want to thank Dr. Kyra Libby and her team for establishing four meetings fairly quickly. quickly in order to ensure that each school can get their own meeting to address their own individual concerns and essentially locate it one, in addition to the one that we held at Kettering Middle two weeks ago. They'll have one at Lake Arbor Elementary where all schools can come together. And what we learned in those boundary forums, and I want to thank several of the board members who were there, is that there is excitement in this program. They want to know a little bit more about what the program means for their students, and I do thank our team for being responsive to that. As it relates to the boundary adjustments for current, I'm going to let Ms. Rihanna talk a little bit more about it, but it's important to note that, again, this is a great thing for Prince George's County Public Schools. We heard a lot from parents about programming and what options are available, and we have to be responsive when our parents say this is something they want. But it's not just because they want it. The data suggests strongly that it's an effective program and has potential for great success for the district.
Okay, this slide review introduces the two adjustments to comprehensive middle-school boundaries that we're proposing in order to accommodate the program at Kettering Middle. It should be noted, there was no middle school where boundary changes wouldn't be necessary. So no matter what middle school, we would have put it out, there's not enough open seats at any school to accommodate a program of this size. So in order to, because Kettering was selected as was recommended as the location, we are proposing two changes. So one, so current fifth graders, rising sixth graders next year from Marlton Elementary would matriculate to Gwen Park Middle School rather than James Madison. So anybody who went to Marlton Elementary and is now at James Madison, they wouldn't be affected. They can continue there. It's just new students, as they transition to the middle school, would go to the new location. Same thing for Patuxent Elementary School. So in order to, we kind of had to do a double move. We have to move students from James Madison into Gwen Park, and then from Kettering into James Madison. So Patuxent Elementary would now matriculate to James Madison rather than Kettering, which would create sufficient space over time as the program's phased in.
Rihanna, if you don't mind, I do want to make just one important note. I think sometimes we assume everyone understands, the board and for the public, Kettering Middle School is located in the central part of our county, and there was a number of questions that came up at the community forums about why Kettering? Why not a southern school and a northern school? The reality is that, as many of you know, it is difficult to place multiple programs across the district, and particularly given the strain of our transportation department. We do provide, one of the few districts who are committed to providing transportation, even for specialty programs. We thought it'd be best and most prudent to put it in the center part of the county, recognizing that it wouldn't be the perfect solution for all, but identifying that it's better to do it in the center part of the county than trying to put three programs and bear the expensive cost of replicating those programs across the entire county.
Thank you. So here, just providing numbers, and one thing I will note, so it shows what we're currently projecting, and then the revised projections with the boundary changes. One thing I'll note is that all three of the schools get to 100% capacity, sort of balances the enrollment among the three schools. As you know, our middle schools are crowded, that's why we're building new middle schools throughout the county, so that will be addressed going forward. But just wanted to note that we...
So we do identify a few other minor adjustments as well, and I think, I want to thank Joshua Thomas and others who have been dealing with the Green Belt community for his short tenure, but I think he heard a lot about it on the campaign trail as well, and Dr. Golson, who met with the Green Belt City Council and discussed this issue at length with the mayor. These are small, minor changes. The first is assigning Green Belt Station to Green Belt Elementary School, K-5 at Eleanor Roosevelt for 9 to 12. It's less than 20 students, and there has been a number of discussions about this dating back for decades. And Dr. Golson, after going through and doing her own review, recognized that there's actually statutes in county council that we have to follow and we should have followed about 15 years ago. Dr. Golson was able to pull the numbers, and again, it's less than 20 students. The second is to assign a portion of Paint Branch Elementary that feeds into Heightsville Middle to Green Belt Middle School, and that's less than five students. And again, these minor adjustments are largely based off of geography, where the students live and reside, and if, when you look at our boundary map, it is time for something that you'll see a little bit later, which is a comprehensive boundary review that looks at our entire district overall. So to that end, in the next year, there's going to be a lot happening in our district, and that's an exciting thing for us, but it requires a lot of legwork. I do thank the Whitehall parents who came and talked about a comprehensive review and looking at the entire system, and thank this Board of Education, Mr. Wallace, the Chair of the OBFA, Obafa, I think, Obafa Committee, and the Chair of the Board of Education, Dr. Thornton, and the Board Leadership for proposing that we look at our entire system as we build new buildings. So we have a new Cherokee Lane Elementary that's opening, proposed fall '21. Comprehensive middle schools, as you know, Dr. Golson, with your approval, has announced six new middle schools. We have a comprehensive high school review and selected overcrowded schools, including Whitehall Elementary. The goal of this is to look at our district overall, and we'll have more details about it in a letter Dr. Golson sent to the Board of Education and was made publicly available. It shows a timeline. I should say again, for those who are new to the process around boundaries, boundaries are a difficult decision, and we recognize it from the public hearings and the engagement in the community forums. Our partners in Montgomery County and Howard County are currently going through this conversation pretty loud and large, but it is necessary in order for us to get it right. So we will propose a comprehensive boundary review. The timeline is about January for releasing an RFP. RFP takes about two months to complete, and we believe we'll bring it back in front of this board around March, and then from there, we'll start the work. Included in that RFP will be language around community engagement, so I do want to make sure that our parent and community understands that our goal is to engage you on the front end and throughout the entire part of the process. And our hope is that the same level of advocacy you have today, you'll have for the six, seven months of this that when it continues. Lastly, as it relates to this particular proposal, you can give us your opinion at this mini-site we have available online. Many of you have already utilized it a lot. Well, you can visit the website. Our team is responsible for updating it regularly, and also visit School Finder to see if the proposed changes in this proposal affects you, just put in your address and find it. With that, we turn it back to Dr. Thornton and the Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Golson and your staff for that presentation, and also for responding to board member inquiries as you were developing this proposal. I saw the traffic between your office and board members, and thank you for those responses. I see some board members who have some additional questions. Mr. Wallace, is that you? Did you want to?
I do. If I'm first, I'm first. Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the administration, just have a couple of quick questions. First, I want to also thank my colleague, Ms. Ahmed, for her leadership around the Whitehall issue. Matters like this are always lend district courtesy if it does not impact District 7, so I'm following your lead on how this goes. But around the topic of boundaries overall, the question to the administration, do we know yet the estimated cost of the contracting out of the task force?
Actually, no, I don't have the estimated cost. I can go back and review Montgomery County and Howard Counties, but we're looking about $1 million.
Okay. And before we, as a system and as a board, publish and publicize a proposed boundary change, there is already internal analysis done, correct?
That is accurate.
Okay. I want to go back to Slide 14, and there was a comment, I just wanted to get clarification on, again, district courtesy doesn't impact District 7, but around the Green Belt Station switch of less than 20 students, did I hear you right, Mr. Rhodes, that the county council can dictate school boundaries?
So the short answer to this is they can strongly encourage through a resolution where proposed students should go if a community is built. So as you know, Green Belt Station was built about seven or eight years ago. It started, it's now a full-fledged community, and it was really built in anticipation of a proposed FBI facility that was going to come. The legislation that the county council passed basically said that the students that go in this certain area would go to Roosevelt High School. That's what the, that's what it actually says. Several administrations have gone passing through, and Dr. Golson and I attended a city council meeting in which they showed us this legislation. We went back and did our own review, and yes, that legislation came, and evidently, there was an agreement at the time, on the administration's side at that time, that that change would occur. It did not occur for a host of reasons, and we are here now.
When we have a legislative platform through the Policy Committee, I want to, again, for, I think it's my fourth year in a row, ask for a local legislative platform that speaks to this issue. While I am thankful for our friends on the county council, it seems that we're chipping away ever so much, Mr. Perez would say this, at the power of the school board, and if they can just willingly write a resolution that says this is where these amount of students will go, whether it's Green Belt, Bowie, District Heights, that is concerning to me. And finally, to Slide 6 with my two minutes left, Slide 6, just now, this is District 7-specific. I haven't received any opposition to the shifts of Princeton and North Forestville, but has the administration, through the public sessions on your side, had you received any opposition?
No, we have not.
Thank you so much, I'll get back.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you. I just want to thank all of the District 5 community members from Whitehall, Tulip Grove, and neighboring school communities that have really come out with a strong voice on the issue of this boundary change. It's been a tough few weeks for all of us, but it means so much to me to have a community that is invested in the future of all of our kids. Our village is strong, and it's shown, it shined brilliantly and clearly that this is the case, that our village is strong over the past couple of weeks. Dr. Golson, I want to thank you for listening to the concerns of my village. When my community expressed their concerns, you withdrew the proposal that was of concern to so many folks, and to me, that shows the type of agile leadership that you have and servant-based leadership, so I thank you for supporting us in that. For those of you from the Whitehall community or Bowie community that are interested in keeping tabs on the external analysis that is going to happen, overcrowding or rezoning moving forward, I will be upstanding a task force, a community-led task force. If you're interested in getting involved, please reach out to me, Yatunde, and email We're getting official, y'all. WhitehallTaskforce1@gmail.com. We already have three dozen folks that are interested in getting involved, so let's keep that momentum moving forward so for over the next six and seven months that we may be going through this process, everyone feels that they are informed and that they're engaged and involved in this process. I'm looking forward to a more unified District 5, thank you for that. I do have one more comment, though, Mr. Chair. Slide 12. Patuxent Elementary School is also in District 5. I just wanted to confirm with Rihanna and administration that the 45 students that are moving from Patuxent to James Madison as opposed to Kettering Middle School, that's the entire school community, right? It's the entire class that's being matriculated to James Madison? Okay, I see Rihanna saying yes. Okay, I guess for those Patuxent parents that are either in attendance here tonight or that are watching online, I just want to express my intent of having a meeting at the school to gain input on this change before casting my vote on, one way or another, on this proposal. I'll be looking to invite some of my colleagues on the board whose districts and schools may also be affected by this, and in the meanwhile, if you have any concerns about this, please feel free to email me. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Ms. Queen.
One minute. Okay. To Ms. Ahmed, my colleagues, I thank you for representing and listening to your constituent and your parents on this matter. To Dr. Golson, I thank you for actually stopping the boundary change for Whitehall, as you have heard from our constituent and for having the meetings in the community. But as a board member who believes in putting the kids first, it bothers us that any of our students are underprivileged at any school, or underperforming, or consider high-risk areas, or rated poorly at any of our schools for barely making a rating. It bothers me that many parents want to stay at one school when all of our schools should be at a high level. I look forward to the day that I believe will come that all of our schools will be considered top-rated, and every resident, every resident and citizen and student at Prince George's County will be Prince George's County proud. Although we have not arrived, just not yet, this board is truly working hard to get us there. With the Chair, Dr. Thornton, with our CEO, Dr. Golson, we will get there, and I believe that. But I request to the parents and to our citizens that we work hard to get the current money that is actually due to our babies and due to our school and our parents, and I ask you guys to stay involved, to get involved, and work together with us so we can make a change in Prince George's County. I agree with my colleague, Mr. Wallace, that it seems that the county council wants to be board members. They keep chipping away at our responsibility. It's concerning for me. How many seem to want to be on the Board of Ed, but yet they don't want the job? Maybe it's because of the pay. For the record, I don't know how we can deal with overcrowding, but as I have suggested and the parents have suggested tonight, we mainly need to look a little deeper into registering our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. The next board member to speak is Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Chair. First, I'd like to thank staff for the work that they've done to bring us to this point in looking at the boundary changes and the language immersion classes. I appreciate the work. I know going through this with my community, it's a lot of work, and when we're dealing with overcrowded schools, at some point, students will have to leave that school. It's a hard decision and it's hard work, but first, there's a need, and then we take time to review and plan and implement. And so as the Whitehall community embarks on this work, it's going to be work. It's a real commitment. It took the community in the southern part of the county four years to get through the whole process to where we are, and we are excited to be getting a new K-3A school, and I think we have exceeded our expectations, so again, I appreciate the work that the staff does. The one thing that I'd like to request in the follow-up, when it comes to the, this slide here actually, where it impacts the District 9 schools, I'd like to see the map of the change. The Marlton School, depending on where that boundary changes, they may be passing James Madison. I'd just like to be clear on how that works. Second, to the school, to the school sixth graders that are coming from Patuxent Elementary, I'd like to welcome you to District 9, where we rock. We work hard to keep our students as high achievers. So welcome to District 9, I look forward to you all coming to my district. The one thing that I want clarity on, and this is a question that I'll pause on for a second, is that this elementary-middle-school boundary does not impact their high school boundary at all, is that correct?
Well, eventually it will, so the students that are at Kettering, we would have to now begin to look at what that high school boundary would look like so we could continue having a conversation about continuity of a language immersion at the high school level.
Well, I would like to welcome them also to come to Frederick Douglass High School, our IB community. James Madison is an IB community, so it just makes sense to move it in that direction, so I would like to welcome them to that. I would love for them to come there, if possible.
So this is where a comprehensive boundary program will come into play.
And that's actually my next statement, is to have a comprehensive boundary. And that's actually my next statement, is to have a comprehensive boundary change or investigation is definitely something that we need. Being a school district of 207 schools, somewhere in that department, it makes sense, especially how we have the overcrowded in the north and underutilization in the south. I think that a comprehensive review of the boundaries would make sense. So I really appreciate your thoughtfulness and forward-thinking on that. So my last comment is about the middle years program for the language immersion. It sounds very similar to the middle years for the IB. And since, you know, if we, if we're talking about extending that to the high school years at some point as they matriculate through, is there a certificate or some type of diploma similar to what the IB students receive? Could our language immersion students receive something similar to that?
So the state actually issues a illiteracy certificate and seal for students who matriculate through our high school language immersion program, language program. Doesn't necessarily have to be immersion, so those students will be eligible to participate in the state designation as well.
So if we're talking about sixth graders, so we have another six years to build that program. So you will always get my support on funding a program that gives our students the ability to gain careers that are international. So you will always have my support. And that's all the questions and comments that I have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Shepherd.
About the, where the families are giving their opinion, is this, all the information is going to you guys, to your office, right, and you reviewing that? Are we going to get a report?
Yes, we provide, we will provide a report for you, a summary of it, and we'll provide it for you between, first, before your public hearing. So you'll have it before the public hearing on November 12th, and then you'll have it before, yeah, obviously to review it for a second reader.
My second question, is this is going to last till that hearing? So families still have that time?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Mr. Burrows.
I had a question specifically about the county council resolution. Can you walk me through that?
It'd be better for me just to provide you a copy of the actual resolution, so you can see it.
Yes, and Dr. Thornton, I would like a legal opinion. I think we are entering in very dangerous territory when we have a, members of the county council or developer who's promised a neighborhood something, and one county council member agrees, and now we're taking a school that is already 126% overcapacity, and we're going to add additional students. That sounds like poor policy. It does not sound like the board should be bound by that decision. I am concerned about other developers doing this exact same thing. I remember sitting on this body not too long ago where the Fairwood parents came up and said a developer promised them a brand-new school. And I do not believe that we are illegally obligated to do that, but I would like our lawyer to do the full analysis on that. I have no strong feeling about this. I mean, I will talk to Mr. Thomas about it, but what I don't want is for us to use this reason, you know, the county council passed a resolution as a reason to change our policies perpetually, you know, going forward. By that token, any developer can build a neighborhood anywhere and mark up their prices and promise a community to put, that they will go to a certain school, and we'll have all of our high-performance schools severely over-enrolled with no relief. And I don't think it's by surprise that this has been done for Roosevelt versus anywhere else. Jubal is down the street, it is under enrolled. And so, this board should not be dictated to by, you know, developers or lobbyists. We need to do and make decisions that make sense for our students, and I'm not sure that this is one of those, that this is that.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows, and I will, I will follow up on that. Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, I'll keep my remarks brief. I want to acknowledge what Mr. Burrows comments, what, the comments that you just made, I think you're spot-on. I do agree that we should not be bound to those, you know, proposals that are coming forward from the county council, and again, driven by developers. I do want to acknowledge and just thank Dr. Goldson and Mr. Rhodes, I know that you were engaged with the city council of Greenbelt. This was one of the first things that we talked about when I first was elected to this position, as a big priority for the community of Greenbelt Station. So I just wanted to acknowledge now making this progress and this step forward, though I agree that the process is something that we need to make sure. It's not a precedent that's set for the future. And I also want to just take this moment to publicly acknowledge the city council of Greenbelt, Mayor Emmett Jordan, as well as other elected officials who represent that community as well, because I know that this is something they've been advocating for and hoping for and waiting for for quite a while. The other piece that I do want to just acknowledge and thank again, Dr. Goldson, is for the continuation of the Chinese immersion program, also an issue that folks in my district have been advocating for since first taking on this role, and so I'm glad that this program is going to be continuing on, continuing on into middle school. So, thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Thomas. Ms. Queen, for three minutes.
No problem, I can talk fast. Again, I want to thank Mr. Burrows for requesting that it be looked into by attorney and for being concerned, as many homeowners and residents are about developers who having money and be given power over decisions for our babies. I have a question for Dr. Goldson and you guys. It was brought up tonight by one of our bus drivers about how many of us actually need to have a CDL, almost made me want to go and get my CDL, but because he was so passionate about it, I may just do that. But have we looked into the transportation part of this with these boundary changes? I'm excited about, you know, a lot of our immersion coming to Kettering, because although you guys rock, we are royal district in central Prince George's County, don't forget it, we are definitely royal here. So I'm excited about that, but have we looked into the transportation issue? Is it going to be a problem? Is it going to be after 6:00? What's going on with that?
So we have not established how long it will take. I can tell you that the distance we did look at for each of these schools for students moving from Marlton to Greenbelt versus James Madison and Patuxent. But we will be doing some comprehensive recommendations on changes for transportation, not just for this, but for all of our schools as our transportation task force begins. So any changes that we will make will not only impact our immersion program, but it will impact all of our specialty programs and our regular boundary schools.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Ms. Ahmed, for three minutes.
Yeah, just to follow up on Ms. Queen's point very quickly before I make my comment, is it possible that we have some, like a rudimentary analysis of what transportation could look like as a follow-up item? Is that possible?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing is, I forgot to thank all of y'all. As all of the comments and concerns around Whitehall came about, I reached out to each of y'all, and you were very responsive with me, colleagues. You were very much, I felt very much on board and that each of you were invested in my community and what came about. And so I really want to thank you all for listening and taking care of my community in the way that I would. So, yep, working together, being a team. I really appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. And finally, Ms. Williams, for three minutes.
I just wanted to ask a question about the resolution. You said that was approved some administrations ago? What year?
It was in the end of the 90s.
End of the 90s.
I'm trying to pull up the actual resolution, I'll provide it for you.
And so, when you said administration, you mean the operational side, or was it a board agenda item that was approved, do you think?
So administrations being several school system administrations, several council administrations. This was something that started as land was being developed. Why and how and when, we don't know. I'm pulling up the conversation we had. There's a section of Greenbelt Station, it's not the entire, so most of Greenbelt Station already is in the zone. There's a small section that was zoned out for whatever reason. Those kids currently go to Berwind Heights instead of Greenbelt Elementary School, less than 20 total students. The decision was made then that those students should go to Greenbelt, but for whatever reason, they were zoned out and go, so their entire neighborhood goes to one school and 20 kids go to another school. This fixed the 20 kids who are zoned out of that area, and there was a resolution that codified that that change was supposed to occur. It never occurred. So generation later, those kids are at a different high school and a different middle school, and that's what the conversation was with the Greenbelt City Council.
And so I think that that is what the comprehensive boundary study will sort of fix, because even in my district, when you look on the map, there are small circles of areas that are, that go to a different school, but the area around them go to one school. So I think that it's important that this comprehensive study goes on. And I fully agree with my colleague on this issue of the resolution, that we have to make sure that we do not allow others to come in and dictate what we are doing, because at the end of the day, if we allow resolutions to impact where students go, we're going to have, continue to have these boundary discussions, because we can only fit, you know, a certain number of kids in the school, so some other kids will have to be moved out, and they don't want that either. So I think that I fully support my colleague on requesting a legal review on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boozer, Strutter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to focus my question on the Spanish immersion middle school, and I note in the survey that for Cesar Chavez Dual Immersion, the percentage of interest in central location was 75%, so it is lower, and I, and there are some questions about distance to the school, and I certainly, you know, drove there for the boundary hearing, and it is quite a distance. Parents are interested, and I think, I think you've answered this clearly, that if a family does not choose to move on to middle school, they default to their boundary, middle school. I did want to clarify if the CPA program at Hyattsville Middle is an audition and lottery option for the students at Cesar Chavez Dual Immersion? Or if I could have that answered, if that's not clear in this moment?
No problem, we'll provide that information, but just want to make everyone clear that Hyattsville Middle School is one of the six schools that will be part of the new, part of the alternative school construction financing, so any programming changes won't be made until that new facility has been built.
Yes, and I should have clarified that I would be asking this question based on, based on the building capacity when the new building is built.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and something, Dr. Goldson, I wanted to, I also really appreciate that we're talking about the movement of sixth grade. And any, any parent who does not realize that their child, one, depending on timeline, may not have sixth grade in their elementary school, I think it's great that we're getting that out there, because some communities really need to process that, thinking about their kids going to middle school for sixth grade. I think the other night at the forum in, in Hyattsville, you noted that by the end of the new middle schools being built, we would be down to only five elementary schools where sixth grade is still in the building, and I did want to make sure I heard you correctly.
That is correct.
Okay, great, yeah, because I think that also can be seen as an equity issue in the boundaries, and I just wanted to, I think everyone needs to be clear that sixth grade is being treated equally throughout the county. It's not special in any one place in the county, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. I think our final speaker is Mr. Thomas. Was your light on? No? Okay, okay, very good. Thank you, Dr. Goldson, for that presentation, and colleagues for your dialogue. We'll now move to item 5.01, appointments to the Board of Education's Alumni Advisory Council. Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, we'd like to move approval of item 5.1.
Is there a second? It's been probably moved and seconded, that the appointments to the advisory council be approved by the Board of Education with the possibility for additional nominees coming forward. Mr. Wallace, an additional comment?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and colleagues, and to the public. The board passed a policy some years ago, almost three years ago now, to enact a systemic level alumni advisory council to advise the board on all matters prudent to them from the alumni perspective. Since my tenure here on the board in 2015, the stakeholders of which, who are alums of this great school system have been a priority of mine and the topic of engagement. There are many alums on this board who bring a unique perspective to the work that we do, and this council, once it is established with the affirmative vote tonight, hopefully, will get to, get to work, not only with the engagement of the alumni community within Prince George's County and the region, but also advising us on certain matters that we oversee. The alumni advisory council is not full yet, there are still some district-specific opportunities left, and I welcome and encourage board members that do have those vacancies to engage their communities, and you can submit names to me or to the administration, and I can facilitate that work as well. There are also still some opportunities for our business leaders, our faith-based leaders, civic associations, community organizations, who are also alums of this school system to be engaged in this council as well. And the, it's not an application process so much, just an interest form that you need to fill out.
Thank you, colleagues. And I see two speakers, and then Ms. Williams and Ms. Ahmed.
First, I'd like to congratulate my colleague, K. Alexander Wallace, on seeing this to fruition. We've talked about this a number of years, and I'm just glad to see that a number of our discussions are finally coming to fruition with your alumni association and the equity conversation, and for me, the procurement piece. And the P3, it's just great to see that after we saw a need, we took time to review, and we're seeing it being implemented. So I just wanted to congratulate you, and I look forward to some great things coming out of this, this committee. So congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ahmed.
No, I just wanted to put a public call out there for folks that are graduates of Bowie High School or Tall Oaks. The District Five seat on the alumni council is vacant, and if you're interested, please reach out to me, Mr. Wallace, and we'll see how we can move from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, the vote is on item 5.1. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect unanimous. We'll now move to the consent agenda. I have a request to pull two items, 6.1 and 6.2. Dr. Goldson, would you please introduce those items, and we'll pull 6.1 and 6.2 for separate discussion?
Item, item 6.1 and 6.2 requires board approval of a request for proposal for internal assessment for reading, language arts, and mathematics interim assessment contract. RFP for administration scoring and reporting platform for internal assessments and approval of the expenditure requirements for November 2019.
Colleagues, a motion is in order regarding 6.3. A motion is in order regarding 6.3. It's been probably moved and seconded, that the board approve expenditure requirements for November 2009. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. We will now have questions from Ms. Ahmed regarding 6.1.
Yes, I, my questions are with 6.1 and 6.2. I just wanted to be clear, one contract is for the online platform to give the test, and the other is for developing the test? Is that what's happening?
Yes, I can speak to that. So there is two contracts. We followed the model that was conducted by the State Department and the administration and development of their assessment program. The first, the first contract that's before you is for the content, the content development of the assessment. The second is for the administration's scoring and reporting. They're divided because many products out there, they're linked, and it limits your scope as far as vendors that can compete for these bids.
Okay, and so... This is a nearly, it's, I guess, $9.4 million between the two of these contracts. Is that over the course of five years, or is that?
Yes.
So the entire cost of the contract over five years, is that 9.4?
That's correct.
Okay, and then these two were looked independently from each other, right? Independently, you came to the conclusion that Pearson is good for this contract and independently for this one, correct?
That too is correct.
Okay. Can you just also briefly explain how students and staff would be interfacing with this, with each of these?
Well, they won't be interfacing with them independently. It'll be one assessment program, it'll be a seamless appearance to our end users, the teachers, parents, students. The winner of this bid, these two contracts are actually the same, that are administering the state assessment program. So it'll be a very similar platform as the state assessment program. They're going to experience the same accessibility features, interface, they'll have access to the same calculators, the way they interface with the state. They'll have access to the same calculators, the way they interface with the state assessment program. This will be administered two to three times a year. It's actually replacing our existing reading assessment program and math assessment program. Those contracts are sunsetting this year, so this is simply replacing those. And it's within the same budget of those existing contracts. So the interface, there will be a data warehousing type solution, which will have the reports that'll be available for teachers, which will inform them on the student's progress towards meeting the standards, as well as home reports that could be used to inform parents and parent-teacher conferences. So it's going to be a pretty seamless interface anyway between the stakeholders and teachers.
Okay. I would just request that as the content development occurs, that we are culturally acute in the way that that occurs. I know that we've had this conversation in the past about having culturally acute books and materials in front of our students. I think that needs to be reflected in our tests as well. That's all. Thank you, Dr. Strutter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and then we'll be able to vote.
I just have two quick questions. You touched on the similarity of, well, you touched on the fact that the, the awardees are the same contractor as the state testing. So this, the test that they're developing, it will be similar to the test that the, the students take on the state, the state test assessment?
So that's correct, but that wasn't the initial intention. We ended up with the same vendor, but again, that wasn't the initial intention. The way the RFPs were written, we wrote them to align with similar expectations that were included with in a state assessment program. So students will engage in similar items. Right now, for instance, in mathematics, in our benchmark assessment programs, we don't have students develop constructive response items. Their basic, simple response, you know, A, B, C, D that we experience because we have limited technologies right now. The old scan forms, the scan sheets and so forth that we all experienced when we were kids. This assessment program brings about computer scoring as one of the options. So we can have similar items that's on the state assessments where students have to fully develop their responses, as well as it'll have, you know, again, similar look and feel. But just to be clear, that wasn't the original intent of how we went about this RFP, but that is the end result.
Okay, great. So that was not a part of their, the evaluation of those?
No, it was not.
So the other part that is very interesting and I think is important that we discuss is the expediency that we can get results and to be able to affect the students when they take these quarterly tests. How quickly will we get results from those assessments?
So written into the RFP, we require the vendors to be able to have access to the recent technologies called computer scoring. You might have heard of artificial intelligence scoring or, anyway. So that allows for computer scoring with pre-equating allows for almost immediate return on results on constructive response items. Students can be required to write an essay, the computer will score it, they can have immediate feedback. So that is the goal, but we still have to work through those processes and the development of the assessments.
Okay. Well, I think this is, I'm looking forward to seeing this, to be able to evaluate an individual student on their progress and be able to impact their work immediately is going to help us to move the needle on our, our state assessment. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Queen?
I'm sorry, quick question. Are they multiple choice questions like A, B, C, D? Are they true and false? What type of test are these?
All right, so with this type of assessment, similar to the state assessment, the multiple guess isn't an option any longer. Students are required to choose the best two or three out of the five. There's technologically enhanced items where the students have to drag and drop. They have to write, they have to provide brief constructed responses. Mathematics, they have to provide proofs or equations or statements. So the days of just bubbling in A, B, C, or D, that's not.
Okay, so thank you so very much. That's what I wanted to know. So you said they have to write and when it comes to math? I'm looking at one of the biggest issues I have now with not just our school system, but with a lot of schools that we stopped cursive writing. It is so needed to write a check. So are they writing in cursive to write maybe $20, $100? I mean, because if we're not teaching that in school, is that part of these tests? I'm just curious because it's so needed.
So it will not include cursive writing. This will be 99% online assessment, which students will have to interface with a keyboard to be able to enter the results.
Okay, so then what are these tests used for? Because in reality, in real life, I, I hear you what you say multiple choice, but in real life, I have to write a check. I don't get the multiple choice at a bank. I don't get the multiple choice when I buy a house. To me, what are we using these tests for if they're not really things that we actually going to use in the real world? Our kids need tests that they're going to use in the real world. In the real world, they use cursive writing. In the real world, we write out in our checkbook. So I hear you with these tests, but what part of these tests are going to be actually something that our children can use?
So the state has established Maryland College and Career Ready standards. The assessments are developed to assess each of those standards and the student's mastery of those individual standards. And it will report out on the student's performance of those standards.
I know I'm asking, I'm preaching to the choir right here, but in the real world, maybe the state really need to think about their standards because they're not reaching the standards that's needed for our children to use in everyday job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. I think final speaker is Mr. Omalola.
Dr. Goldson, I just wanted to thank you and your staff. I know that after we reviewed the scores from this year, we saw that actually needed to be taken. And just to make sure that we're clarifying, these tests are pre-test and teachers as well as the administrative staff will have access to the result as soon as possible.
Yes, that is correct. The assessments are supposed to be used to help inform instruction.
Gotcha. So once again, just wanted to thank you and your staff for making sure that we're actually giving immediate data to those in the classroom every day about where their students are and how to improve. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. The vote is on 6.1 and 6.2 as they were combined. I don't think I see any opposition. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect that it's unanimous, please.
Point of clarification, who made the, do you ladies have a motion on the record?
Move.
There was, there was no motion on it?
Motion in a second, sir.
There was no motion? Okay. Ms. Ahmed, you're offering a motion. Who seconded? Mr. Wallace? Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to Dr. Goldson. We've done that, so we have none, seven, one, none. Operating the first reader, item number eight, I'll now yield the floor to Mr. Wallace regarding the operations budget, operating budget priorities.
Didn't know which one we were doing. All right, thank you, colleagues. On behalf of the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee, I bring forth a list of four recommendations and one statement of support regarding the Board priorities to our CEO for the development of the FY '21 operating budget. I'm trying to pull up, Board docs, give me just a second. Yes, I want to thank all of, all the Board members that did submit the survey, their, their responses to the survey and the committee chairs for doing that as well. The Board Committee on the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs took the matters very seriously and weighted that with the committee chair responses very heavily in our adaptation of our recommendations. Before you are a set of recommendations in order regarding the increased compensation for our workforce. This first and foremost. The need to address food insecurity for our students. Number three is the enhancement of our building services and building maintenance services. Number four is the support, as we talked about earlier today, of the language immersion programs throughout our county. And number five is a statement of support and for us as a Board and a community to continue advocating for additional funding and services related to the Curwen Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education. So on behalf of the committee, I want to thank everyone that participated. This, as you colleagues that have been on the Board for a while may know that this is coming a little bit early than, than later years. I want to personally thank Ms. Williams and Ms. Boozer Strutter for pushing us to start this conversation a whole lot earlier. I think that the, the work that we're going to do around our budget, colleagues, is going to be very, very cohesive because of that action, the push of three months earlier. Thank you so much. On behalf of the committee, I move approval.
And because it is a committee report, there will be no need for a second. It's on the floor as a motion. Ms. Williams?
Again, I'd like to thank my colleague for his leadership on the Budget Committee, the OBM whatever, whatever committee. It is, it's a lot of work. And so the, the thoughts behind the recommendations that I made were from listening to the community for the year. And so as we move into our budget creation period, it's important that the, the staff and administration know where my comments will be coming from so that as they present their budget in December, my thoughts are already included and they will not have to go back and rework the budget for new ideas. So I look forward to having the discussion and including the recommendations that I presented because it's important that we get this right, knowing that our budgets are limited and the time that we have is even more limited. So thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Colleagues, the vote is on the budget priorities as established by the Board, as recommended by the committee. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect, that the vote is unanimous. We'll now turn our attention to item 8.2, focused work group on building services coming from the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again. And on behalf of the committee, at our last meeting, we'd had a very fruitful three-hour meeting. I want to thank the administration for sticking it out. We couldn't do it without you all. And this was another topic of conversation for many years. And I, I'm, while I just happen to chair the committee at this point, I want to definitely thank Ms., Ms. Queen for her advocacy regarding the work of our building services and, and pictures and videos. That work spearheaded by her led us to this conversation around our building services and maintenance. This is through Board Policy 8100. This would enact a focused work group to specifically look at our building services division and making sure that as fiscal officers of the school system, we're getting the best return on our investment for that department.
Thank you. Colleagues, the motion is on eight, two, I'm sorry, Ms. Ahmed.
Yes, just a couple of points. I just, when will we get the resumes of the proposed members? Per policy, I think we need that.
I want to get clarification. I know we spoke briefly. Most of the individuals slated through the resolution will be internal, not external. So we'll, we'll weed that out and Board Executive Director will, will help me please weed that out. And I know there are designated to have two external folks from our labor partners. And we'll make sure that once we have, once this passes, because then we, they would be charged to submit a designated, that we get the proper biographical information to the Board.
Okay. And then my other point here is that the work, by policy, each member of the work group has voting power as it relates to that specific work group. And this work group is giving voter power, voting power to three members of administration and two members of our labor partners. And so I would just advocate for equal representation from both sides. So whether that's three and three or two and two, four and four, whatever that might be as a consideration.
I have no objection.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
My comment isn't, or my question isn't on this particular focused work group. I'd just like to follow up on the status of the original focused work group that was approved in May, just to get a status update on the work of that group. Because if I understand correctly, it was to be completed in the month of October. That's all.
Well, certainly, Ms. King, we'll arrange for a status report on that at our next meeting. Okay. Colleagues, the vote is on this work group. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Let the record reflect one no. And I'll explain to the chairman later.
I, I don't think there was a no.
No, 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 there was.
There was? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll explain to the chairman later.
Okay.
You know why. We talked about it at length, but I'm glad to see we have moved on this. Okay. We have an item, a 9.0 follow-up items from our October 10th meeting will be posted on Board Docs. I'll ask now for a motion to approve action taken in executive session.
I move to approve action.
It's been properly moved and seconded that items taken in our executive session be approved involving legal matters, student appeals, personal matters, administrative matters, internal audit, and chief executive officer reporter administrative matters. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. May I have a motion to adjourn? Properly moved and seconded that the Board adjourns this meeting. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Who's that?
Oh, yeah, please, just quickly. Very quickly, I just wanted to recognize the student from, that's from Peeggrass that attended our Board meeting today, Jordan Colkett. Do you mind taking a stand so we can recognize you, Jordan?
Hello, Jordan. Welcome, sir. What school are you from?
Parkdale. Parkdale High School.
Parkdale. There's only one high school, eh?
There's only one high school in the county.
Thank you, everyone.